We're back in open session, returning from the Emeryville Special Closed Session. The time, Madam Clerk, is 7:11 PM. I would like to invite the City Attorney to report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were, there was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. The time is 7:11. This meeting is adjourned. For the members of the public who are here, the Redevelopment Agency meeting will start in four minutes, and the City Council meeting will be right after that. Good evening. The time is 7:15 PM. Today is April 4th, 2023. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the City of Emeryville as the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Before we begin, I'll ask if Vice Mayor Welch would please, for purposes of compliance with Assembly Bill 2449, please state her reason for being virtual this evening.
I'm participating using the Just Cause, I'm forgetting the name, due to my positive COVID status, and no one under the age of 18 is present with me in the room.
Okay, to confirm, is anyone over the age of 18 with you?
No.
Okay, thank you. And you're able to make all votes this evening, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Present.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Present.
And Mayor Bowders.
Here. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move to approve the final agenda.
Thank you. A motion by Member Carr, second by Vice Mayor Welch to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Present. Oh, sorry, aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. The motion to approve agenda has happened. Ex parte communications, seeing and hearing none. Public comment for a consent agenda or items not on the agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment on the Redevelopment Agency agenda can do so for two minutes. Seeing and hearing none. Consent calendar, there are two items on the consent calendar. Are there any questions or polls by members? Seeing and hearing none. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I moved, I moved the consent calendar.
I second.
Thank you. A motion by Carr, second by Welch to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Five ayes, zero noes. Consent calendar is approved. There are no action items. Madam Clerk, time is 7:17. That meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:17. Madam Clerk, I call to order the City of Emeryville's regular City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. Before we begin this meeting, Vice Mayor Welch, for the purposes of the record pursuant to AB 2449, could you please state the purpose for your attendance virtual today?
I'm using the Just Cause allowance due to my positive COVID status, and no one above the age of 18 is present with me in the room.
And you're able to make all votes this evening, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Present.
Councilmember Mora?
Present.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Here.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Present.
And Mayor Bowders.
Here. For the approval of the final agenda, members, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda today. I'd like to move item four, which is our special orders of the day related to a presentation for the mosquito abatement district. I'd like to move it after action items 12. It's a rather lengthy presentation. I want to be courteous of the time of the other members of the public. Without objection, is there unanimous consent to my request to make that change?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that adjustment. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Second. Motion by Bowders, second by Carr to approve the agenda as amended. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye, um, yeah, aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. We'll skip special orders of the day and come back to it. Announcements of commission and committee vacancies, Madam Clerk?
Mayor and Council, thank you. I wanted to let you know that the application period closed last night for the current committee and commission vacancies. We received 13 applications across six advisory bodies, and there are a total of 12 vacancies right now. The one thing that I did want to mention is that the Commission on Aging, which currently has four vacancies, did not receive any applications. And that is the end of my report, unless you have any questions.
Questions on the committee and commission vacancies? Seeing and hearing none. Item six is council member's special announcements or reports of meetings and attendance. Are there any members who wish to report a meeting that they attended? It's council member. Vice Mayor Welch, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. I wanted to report one item, but of course, I got into closed session and I blanked on it. Give me one moment. I just wanted to, I just wanted to commend and congratulate a couple of events that happened in the last two weeks since our last meeting. Bay Street Shopping Center had a grand opening for the Bay Break upstairs. So for those who aren't familiar, Bay Street's undergoing some significant renovations with new tenants, and there are now new restaurants up at the Bay Break. The grocery store will hopefully be open by the end of this year. I would also like to congratulate and thank the members of both the community services and the public works teams, who helped us put on our bike counter opening, which took place on April 1st. We've now got that up and running over on the Greenway. It's just north of 66th Street. It will track bike and pedestrian movement on the paved part of the trail. So please get out and use the Bay Trail as much as you'd like. And with that, we'll move to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick thing, just wanted to alert people, if you haven't noticed already, that today we had some bugs appended to the City Hall. We had the, it was the four works by an artist named Kalman, Ken Kalman, Ant Mosquito, Stag Beetle, and Grasshopper. And they were selected at the 2022 Emeryville Celebration of the Arts Show for the city's 2022 Purchase Award. They're cool-looking pieces of art, so just want to alert people to that, and you can notice it when you head out. That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight, ex parte communications. Are there any members who wish to report anything for this agenda?
Yes, member, not, it was Mr. Swae contacted me regarding item five.
Item five, okay.
Announcements of commission and committee vacancies.
Okay. Are there any other members who wish to report an ex parte communication? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. So a member of the public who would like to come and speak to us about any item not on the agenda this evening will have three minutes to do so. And I would like to invite you to come on up. Do we have, can we assist with the microphone? Can you pull that microphone down to you and announce your name and let us know who you are and give your comments?
Hello, hello, I'm Avon Rodriguez, and...
Well, yeah, we'll let her fix that for you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
There you go.
Um, so, uh...
Oh, I think she's got it now. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Uh, so, first, my friend, her name's Ava Newton. She will be, um, she's on the Zoom, and she'll be speaking first, um, and yes.
Okay, so let me find her here. I see a couple of hands raised. I'm going to guess Newton here, okay. We will, let's see. There we go.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. So, good evening. We are fifth graders from Escuela Bilingüe Nacional. My name is Ava Newton.
And my name is Avon Rodriguez. We also have two more members, Charlotte Ferrier and Alana Keelygo, who are also watching on video. Right now, in fifth grade, we are completing a big project called Exhibition. Our project focuses on homelessness, and we've been learning about the causes, impact, and solutions for homelessness in our community and country.
As a part of our project, we also wanted to take action to make a difference in our community. To do this, we have organized a canned food drive at our school, which has been successful so far, but would also like to extend this to the wider community of Emeryville.
Our food drive is dedicated to a very special cause. We will be donating the food to Alameda Food Bank. We please ask that even canned foods, boxed foods, non-perishable foods, and water. We have a box outside the door, um, and our deadline is April 19th, 2023.
We want to give a thanks to Mr. Mayor because he made all of this possible and for allowing us to be here. Thank you for listening and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for those who are at home, the students from Escuela Bilingüe will be having a box that will be down in the city lobby. And if you would like to make a donation for a non-perishable food item, a canned good, or bottled water, something that is not expired and would go to a person who's hungry and in need, the students there, as part of their social project, are collecting those items between now and the 19th, and then they will be retrieving them from City Hall. And we are very happy to support you in that endeavor, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment for an item not on the agenda? Mr. Carpio, come on up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the new City Council member. I'm familiar with Veteran Bowder, but you are new, you are new, and someone else is missing. Okay, there, and Mora. Okay. Well, my name is Andrei Carpio, and I'm an old timer here. I moved here in Emeryville in 1967, and I bought a house, a whole house, and, and the house was demolished a couple of years ago, so. But that's, I'm not coming here to speak about, about that grievance. I'm just welcoming the new member because this city has been great for me. I have had, I'm an engineer, and I have, I have manufactured a solar car, and we have, I don't know if you know what's a solar car? It's, it's like a flying saucer. And I was the, I was the engineer of the team, and I patented a suspension, and special for solar car. And so we race in Australia, in Europe, and in Japan, and we've been successful. Basically, I brought the name of Emeryville everywhere we had the solar car. And lots of people wonder what was that for a flying saucer, you know? They did not know how much expense the car was, the solar car, our tech star, and the space type. And so they're very, very efficient, also very expensive, but we didn't pay. Someone else paid $75,000. I don't want to give you the name. I don't want to make publicity to that person. But he was a very, very nice person. He's still alive, and, and when we met him, we were all excited to have him as a donation for the, for the solar car, which brought all the honor to Emeryville. So this is my part of it, and this is the positive part of it. And the other, the other negative part is what the City Council, except for Scott Dunlop, who voted to demolish my home, which was an historical content because it was the place where the solar car was conceived, designed, and partly manufactured. One part was made at Stanford University, and the other part was made at UC Berkeley. So I brought on my own lots of honor to the city of Emeryville, as we are the unique machine. So that's what I want to say today. And I'm sorry I don't hear that well, and I have to tell people to speak slowly, especially Mr. Bowder. He speaks too fast for me. I just can't have it. Or if, if he cannot slow down, then I would like to have everything he says to be written. I could read it when I'm home. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda? Come on up.
I'm in this room before I was the first poet laureate of Emeryville in 2011. This time, I'm trying with other Watergate residents to get ADA doors. Our front doors are really heavy. Six of our doors have the push button automatic open, and the other six, they feel isn't needed. Since I've been complaining and had, had, had broken my foot on the door, tripping through the heavy door, and then I've had a frozen shoulder that has been better for about a month, but it lasted almost four months. So I'm hoping that the council will support our effort. General manager is resisting like mad, and it's money. We have a $20 million reserve. The doors cost, the six doors, would be $75,000. And what the manager has been doing, the ADA has all different levels kind of doors. You can get them for under $2,000, but you still can't open them. At least I can't. The disabled can't. The parents with kids with buggies and all. And the able-bodied men and women say that the door's okay for them unless they have groceries, and then it's hard for them, too. And yesterday, I just tripped again on the door, and this neighbor took my groceries up to my door for me. I don't know if I should call him by name, but the general manager said to me, "Do you really think you should live at a place where you can't open your own front door?" I said, "You wouldn't say that to a woman, to a man." I said, "It's both ageist and sexist." I've lived there 30 years. I've already paid in my HOA dues for several doors. I'm 81 years old. I haven't been able to walk without a walker for three years. I have neuropathy without having diabetes, so go figure. Then he said to me, "Just because you asked doesn't mean you get them, that I have to give them to you." And I said, "You're not giving anything to me. It's the law, you know, it's a disability law." And the third thing he said, that all these things gave rise for me to complain to the government, to FIA. The third thing he said, "Just because you have an injury doesn't mean I have to give you doors." So I was hoping the council, whatever you can do to support this, I'd appreciate it, and so would the other disabled at Watergate.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your comment.
Okay.
Other members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on this agenda? This is public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. We'll move to the consent calendar. Are there any members who wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Or discuss the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I moved the consent calendar. Go ahead. I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Welch and a second from Councilmember Carr to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, thank you. The council, the consent calendar is approved. There are no public hearings, action items. Item 12.1 is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee's Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for Calendar Year 2022, and the Proposed Committee Priorities for Calendar Year 2023. Welcome.
Well, so we have a presentation.
I shall pull that up for you.
Yeah, thank you. Hi everyone, I'm Matthew Solomon. I'm the Chair of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Appreciate you having me today. So it's been a busy year at BPAC this year. So just as a brief overview of who we are and why we're here, if you don't mind moving to the next slide. So our city chartered purpose is to provide input and recommendations regarding the city policies, priorities, and feedback related to the Bike and Pedestrian Plan and related initiatives. And if you move to the next slide, our goals generally are to improve access in the city infrastructure for both bike and pedestrians, and safety for people who ride a bike, walk, roll, or take transit in Emeryville. So moving to the next slide, we had a great year. As you can see on the pictures on this slide, we worked on the new active transportation plan. We had our second annual holiday parade, and then a return to bike, bike to wherever day this year. Next slide. So our accomplishments for last year are probably the biggest use of our time was working on the Active Transportation Plan, where we provided reviews to Alter, the consultants that are working with the city, to put that together and provided input on the development of that plan. We also provided input to significant new development projects in the city, and provided suggested changes that led to improved bike and pedestrian environment, and also worked with the Public Works Department to provide input to their, to their new projects and initiatives. And then finally, we just kicked off our new way, the new wayfinding plan for the city, which is a new initiative that we think will make it easier for people to get around the city comfortably and safely. Next slide. Our priorities for 2023 remain similar to our priorities for 2022. First off, just to highlight the Powell-Christie intersection, which remains the most dangerous intersection, the most inaccessible intersection in the city for people not in a car. And so we want to work with the city. We know that the, the Emeryville Loop Plan is, is one method that the city has identified to potentially solve that problem, so looking forward to working with Public Works to, to iron that out. We also want to finalize the Active Transportation Plan. We have a great draft that we've been working through and look forward to finalizing that this year. And as I mentioned, we are just kicked off the wayfinding plan, so I think a couple sessions this year, we'll be working with Alter to, to finalize that, or to, to develop that, excuse me. And then, two last things on this slide. One is continuing to identify and prioritize improvements that can be made throughout the city. This includes slow streets, village greens, and various multimodal projects that we think can be implemented, ranging from very quickly to over a more extended basis. And then working again with developers in the city who are looking to build new projects to identify opportunities to improve bike and pedestrian infrastructure while they do that. Moving to the next slide. A couple of other priorities that we have. One is improving diversity and just generally the number of people engaged with bike and pedestrian issues in the city. Would be very open to working with the City Council on ways to improve that, because I, you know, want to represent the community as a whole. More generally, working to identify more opportunities for micro mobility in the city. It's not just people who own their own bicycles, or, you know, people who don't bike, if they want a scooter, or, you know, use the bike share. Want to identify ways to, to build that in to our infrastructure. Outside of specific pieces of infrastructure, we want to work with the city to break down educational, educational and informational barriers to make sure that people feel comfortable knowing how to bike, or knowing how to move around comfortably and safely. Working with city, the city planning department to update objective standards. And then finally, aligning with neighboring cities where possible to acknowledge that our network of bike and pedestrian infrastructure doesn't stop at the city borders. Next slide. And then just, just to highlight two specific priorities, that's our Active Transportation Plan, which is finalizing that over the next couple of months, and that, that'll be our 10-year Active Transportation Plan to guide city infrastructure investments. And then, next slide, our second highlighted priority is the Wayfinding Plan, which I, I mentioned before. And then finally, I think the next slide's conclusion slide. So this is just sort of our, our mission statement, but we're trying to increase the quality of life for, for residents, for people working in Emeryville, for people who are just traveling through. And our goal is that people, regardless of their age, of their physical ability, race, sex, gender, et cetera, are able to move around the city safely and quickly and comfortably and joyfully, without being in a, in a motor vehicle. So appreciate you having me and your support on all these issues, and look forward to working with you over the next year.
Thank you. Before we take questions or comments, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on item 12.1 for the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee's Annual Report? I see no hands online. I see no members public here. Public comment is closed on that item, and we'll turn to discussion. Are there any members here who wish to ask questions? You have questions or comments?
Yes.
I, thank you so much for the presentation, and I appreciate all the work that has been put in by the Bike and Pedestrian Committee on getting the Active Transportation Plan going and identifying priorities. One of the questions I had is, have you any, any ways or methods or modalities in which you can determine how many people in the city use alternative transportation other than cars? And what are those, what do they use? Bikes, scooters? Do they, do they walk to places? Is there, is that something that has been identified? Or is there a mechanism in place that does that?
That's a great question. I believe in the Active Transportation Plan, we, they, the city conducted surveys, or the consultants conducted surveys to measure that, including for people who live in the city, people who work here, people who are just traveling through. And I don't know the numbers offhand, so I don't want to, I don't want to guess, but I believe that they're in there, and I'm happy to share that again. And I think that, you know, continuing to ask that question is obviously very important to make sure that... And I think that, you know, continuing to ask that question is obviously very important to make sure that we're achieving our goals. I know the new bike counter just launched this weekend, and that's one method of determining where people are in a specific piece of, a specific street. So I would definitely say that that's something that we want to continue to make, to measure progress on.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you. Others with questions or comments? I will just, I'll just thank you, Matt, for being here. And thanks to the committee, all the members of the BPAC for your incredible advocacy on our active transportation issues. It's an exciting time in our city with just the opportunities we have to do some really great stuff. And I know the BPAC is one of the most opinionated committees in the city, and that's a great thing. As a transportation committee representative, getting the input you provide has been really helpful. And I'm very optimistic that regional funding grants, which will be announced in the next sixty days, will be hopefully very generous to our city, and we will have a lot of fun things to program in the coming years. So wayfinding, I think, is a big thing. I would actually, I'd really love to have an opportunity to provide some input at Transportation Committee about wayfinding that can be shared kind of with the BPAC so that we can have a discussion or perhaps even a joint meeting of the Transportation Committee with the BPAC as an opportunity to go over this issue, because I think there's a lot of opportunities right now to do that well.
Good.
Awesome.
Welcome in.
Okay, seeing no other, oh, I see Councilmember Mora's hand is raised. Go ahead, David.
Yes, I concur with everything the mayor said. And Matt, I just want to thank you for the presentation and say that I do deeply appreciate the work that you and the rest of the committee has put into just thinking about biking around the city. As you know, I'm part of the majority of our council that bike is our primary way of getting around the city. So just please know that you guys have the support of this council.
Thank you, Councilmember Mora. Thank you, Matthew, for your presentation. All right, that will conclude twelve point one. Item twelve point two is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving the forms and authorizing the distribution of a notice of intention to sell bonds, a notice of sale, and a preliminary official statement in connection with the offering and sale of the city's 2023 general obligation bonds from Measure C. Good evening, Lawrence.
The presentation first. Good evening, mayor and member of the council. My name's Lon Chu. I'm the finance director for the city. Tonight, I'm excited to present the, these items together with David Brosny. David Brosny is the managing director of KNM Public Finance. The general obligation bond requires the council to approve three documents. The first document is the notice of intention to sell bonds. The second document is notice of sale. And the last document is preliminary official statement. I'll give a brief background on the general obligation. I'll give a brief background on the general obligation bonds, and David will provide details on the three documents. Let's move on to the next slide. Okay, it's a high-level summary on the background on the bonds. In June 2018, the voter-approved Measure C, which offers a issuance of fifty million general obligation bond to finance affordable housing for no-income residents. Then in March 2021, the city council adopted the Affordable Housing Bond Administration and Expansion Plan. That laid out the guideline for the expansion of the bonds. In February, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing staff to issue a fifty million general obligation bonds. Now I turn over to David Brosny of KNM Public Finance to provide more information on the bond financing structure.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me okay?
We can hear you, yep.
Great, thank you. This is an item that has been for the council several times in various forms. In February, you approved the basic legal documents for the issuance of the bonds, the indenture, and a couple of the features that were incorporated in that was the decision to issue all the bonds upfront as one single issue. And because these are taxable bonds, which I'll explain in a second, you can earn interest earnings on this, which you will do. And it effectively indexes the authorization so that over time, as costs go up, so will the buying power of the bond proceeds. The bond issue is taxable, not tax-exempt, because the projects have large components of private use. That's the most effective way of meeting your goals of providing housing. We're looking to sell the bonds for a twenty-five-year term with level bond payments, which means as AV goes up, the tax rate goes down, and especially goes down as new development picks up a part of that tax burden. And the recommendation has been to sell the bonds at a competitive sale where underwriters will bid, and the lowest bidder wins the bonds. If I have control, the slides are not, maybe I do, no. Just a little bit on interest rates, since anybody who pays attention these days knows the market has not been the quietest, and there has been some volatility. And this chart shows where rates have been at various points in which this matter's come up. We'll talk a moment about estimates that we provided earlier, which are referred to as a good faith estimate. You can see where the market was there. Last time you saw this matter, rates were higher. Rates have improved and hopefully will stay improved. And, you know, the market will be what the market will be, but at least the wind seemed to be blowing a little more gently right now. And then the next slide, please. So I mentioned good faith estimates. This is a requirement of state law that it's in the public record. And the items on this page are what the law requires. It goes on the public record. These estimates are based on market in January with a pretty healthy cushion. So actually, we expect these bonds to do better. Of course, we don't have control over that, but we show here an interest rate of six point three four percent. Sold today, it's closer to five percent. The finance charges of the cost of various consultants, like ourselves, and the underwriters who sell the bonds to investors. You can see what is then available out of the issuance for the project amount, and the estimate for what total interest and principal will be over the twenty-five years until the bonds are paid off. And we can go to the next slide. The bottom line on geo-bonds is how it affects your taxpayers, because they are serviced out of additional property tax. And so we're showing here the current estimates based on the assumptions we've been using. Average tax rate of about forty-three dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessed valuation. The median residential assessed valuation in the city is just under four hundred million. And now remember, that's not market value, that's assessed value, which reflects market value at the time the property was purchased. So it's a real mix of properties that are below, that's a median, which means half the properties are below that, half the properties are above that. And based on the median household, the annual tax would be a hundred and seventy dollars a year. Just as a point of comparison, when the matter was brought before the voters, the estimate, it ended up being about fifty dollars per hundred thousand. So primarily because of growth in assessed valuation, the tax impact has gone down. And then maybe the next page, and feel free to stop me. So the documents you approved today are really the marketing documents. Like I said, you approved the indenture, and now you're approving the marketing documents. The first one, the notice of intention to sell bonds is a legal requirement for an advertisement, and it gives some of the basics. The notice of sale, it's a much more substantial document. It's like the bidding form. It has all the terms and conditions of the bid, and it's the package that is distributed to the various bidders on municipal bonds. The actual bidding will be done electronically on an internet platform, and the notice of sales, frankly, read online as well, but it's a document. And then the key document is the preliminary official statement, and it's a combination of a marketing document, a sales document, but also very importantly, a disclosure document. And I'm going to talk about that a little more in a second. Tells the investors what they need to know in order to make an informed investment decision, and includes the transaction, risks, various economic and financial information about the city, and what is deemed by the city and its advisors to be the material information. And then we go to the next slide. I wanted to pause on the official statement, because it really is an important document. The city's selling securities. It's going into the public markets, and that does raise the stakes in terms of the borrowing of funds. Municipal bonds are free of a whole lot of federal and state regulations, but they're not free from the anti-fraud rules that were embedded in the securities laws. These are the laws that go all the way back to the, following the Great Depression, the Thirty-three and Thirty-four Acts. And you can see bold in there what the key words are in the law. It's not making any untrue statement of material fact or admitting to state of material fact. And we note here that that actually applies not just to the official statement, but the comments that are made by the city that might attract investor attention. And this is frankly our short course in federal disclosure law. And it's important that legislative bodies recognize that they do, they are the responsible party in approving this document. It's the city's document. It gets help from consultants like ourselves and the Disclosure Council and your staff. And that's reasonable, but ultimately, it's the city's responsibility. And we, even though it is a marketing document, we advise and the team that's worked on this, really focus on it more as a disclosure document. It's the city's defense if there ever were a securities law issue. And I don't say this to be frightening or alarmist, this is a fairly straightforward bond issue. But it is important that, at least in our view and the view of the Disclosure Council, who might have given you a ten or fifteen million plus rather than the one page that I'm presenting, that this is serious stuff. And I guess the only comment I make is, if, when looking at this, and you know, as you look at it, it's an interesting document. It's always interesting to see how others view you, and this is how others will be viewing the city. If anybody happens to see something that they think is noteworthy, bring it to the attention of your staff. The discussion of that in itself, the airing of that always serves to protect the issuer because it shows internal diligence. But this document is prepared with a great deal of air, and I'm certainly very confident this has been, this is a properly prepared official statement. And I think that is all of the remarks I wanted to cover. Lawrence, may I pass it over to you as to the official action?
David, you still have to add one more slide for the social bonds, the next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's the problem of working on one screen. Yeah, no, thank you, Lawrence. So one final thing is there has been a growth in all kinds of investment areas in what is referred to as ESG, environmental, social, and government factors. A growing number of investors are very interested in where their money is going in terms of its impact on various social issues. And there is labeling that is now emerging to label securities as ESG when they're appropriate for the purposes. We, these are squarely within the lines of what a social bond is a designation. You may have heard of green bonds. This is sort of the cousin of a green bond. And we have recommended that the city label these bonds as social bonds. It will hopefully attract additional investors. It certainly is consistent with what we think are the values of the city, and certainly the values that are inherent in this particular bond issue. And so as part of the rating on this bond issue, we've asked standard imports who are doing the bond issue to provide a second-party opinion. That's sort of the gold standard of marketing for ESG bonds. And it kind of puts this in the highest category of social bonds. And like I said, will hopefully attract additional investors, and certainly will help, will place the city in the position of helping to, helping to build a vibrant and robust ESG marketplace. So that is the final recommendation. I want to make sure that was brought to your attention.
Thank you. David, Lawrence, do you have more to present?
Let's move on to the final slide. Staff recommend that the council adopt the resolution approving notice of intention to sell bonds, notice of sale, and preliminary official statement in connection with the issuance of the fifty million general obligation bonds. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you. This time we'll go to public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment on item twelve point two will have three minutes to do so. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on item twelve point two? I see no hands raised, and I see no members present. Public comment being closed. Members have their questions for staff? Or comments?
I'll comment.
Number Cor.
That was a great idea, about it making it a green bond and a social bond. And I hope it does put out this statement that the city is very much invested in those type of initiatives.
Especially now this is related to the affordable housing. I think this is very appropriate to designate this as a social bonds.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Other council members who have comments? I'll just, Vice Mayor Welch?
Sorry, I might have missed this. I was just looking through the notice of sale, and the date and time for the bid, it's April twenty-sixth. That's the only day, right? The bidding is complete on April twenty-sixth?
Yes, one day.
Yes.
Okay.
It actually, it's an amazing process. All the bids come in now within five minutes of each other. Because nobody wants, you know how markets move. Everybody waits for the last minute. So it's, yeah, you sit around getting nervous, and then all the bids come in within a couple minutes of each other.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mora?
Yeah, just two questions, two related questions. So the presentation alluded to the, kind of the instability in the bond market and how rates have kind of been jumping around quite a bit. So my first question is, are we concerned, do we think these are competitive, I guess, with what other securities are out there, or bonds that would compete in the same asset class? And secondly, is there, would there then be a concern that, I guess, that there's no takers? Or what would happen in that scenario, if that's a concern?
Lawrence, I'm happy to answer. That was fine. First of all, we think these bonds will be very attractive. We think your rating will be certainly in the double A level. We always have aspirations, so I think they'll be very attractive. The bond, there have been a shortage of municipal bonds. The market supply has been light. So our experience has been that demand has been pretty good. The, in terms of the volatility, we monitor that. If it turns out that is a bad week, a SoCon Valley bank happens on Tuesday, and the market goes through some kind of gyrations, we would recommend postponing a week or two. We don't recommend trying to be super clever on market timing. It's just, it's just impossible, as you can imagine, to really time a market. But we certainly pay attention to that. And on the rare, on rare occasions, have we scheduled a sale. We have, the city has the power to do that if that seems appropriate. But fortunately, the market's been good. We were in the market last week, and we're very pleased to see the bond issues that we were selling outperformed our expectations. So fingers crossed, we'll see that again in a few weeks.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I just, I want to take a moment and just recognize all the people in this process up until now. I want to thank all four of the former council members who were here in 2018 that worked on this body of work, council members Medina, Martinez, Donahue, and Pats. I want to thank the voters in the city of Emeryville for the overwhelming support for producing affordable housing and leveraging the assessed value of the city in a way that's going to be productive to the development of the city, to make it more equitable and inclusive of other people. I want to thank the committees in the city that provided the oversight and input. I want to thank the staff, especially the Housing Department, for all their work in developing the Housing Expenditure Plan that created the space for us to produce affordable housing for low-income people, seniors on fixed incomes, people who are formerly homeless and foster youth, among others. And I want to thank the finance team and the consultants we have who are going to bring this back over the finish line and do the bond issuance this month. I got to participate in New York last year as the Chair of the Transportation Commission in a bond issuance to leverage Measure BB funds to accelerate the construction of projects against the sales tax revenue we have to bring them online at a time that was cheaper. And so I think that the plan we have right now is a great plan. I'm really optimistic about getting a very favorable credit rating. I look forward to that being completed in the next two weeks and closing this. So with that, if there's no further comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution, the preliminary official statement, the notice of intention to sell bonds, and the notice of sale.
Second.
A motion by Bowders, second by Core to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Core?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, five ayes, zero noes. It's approved. Thank you so much. Thanks, Lawrence. Okay, we'll go back to item four on the agenda now, which is our presentation from the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. And Ryan Clausenitzer is here, and welcome, Ryan. Thank you for being here this evening, as you do come periodically to provide us with a oversight into the fascinating, as I like to say, the fascinating and ugly underbelly of the world of mosquitoes. So, you know, this is like the fourth or fifth time I've had this presentation, Ryan, and it's always, you're a very entertaining guy, so I'm looking forward to hearing it.
Well, I hope not to disappoint. Thank you very much for having me, Mr. Mayor and Council. I will be brief. It's usually a ten-minute presentation. The last time I was here, I think, was in 2019, so I try to keep it fresh about every four years ago. And I'm very happy to be joined by our former trustee, Betsy Cooley. So thank you for joining us. We've had a very strong relationship with Emeryville over the years, and I appreciate that. So again, my name is Ryan Clausenitzer. I'm just going to give a ten-minute update to you all and members in the public of our Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. I'm going to talk about that you may not know that there's a mosquito abatement district. If you didn't realize, if you're a property owner or renter, you would see this on your property tax about $4. Why do you have a mosquito abatement district? And what do we do? And why do we do it? So we have been around, again, since 1930. A lot of parts of this bay in the Alameda County, Emeryville, very hard to live at that point. There was a lot of aggressive mosquitoes, and they just made the connection that mosquitoes were spread, they spread diseases. Before that, they thought air was the force of mosquitoes, so malaria, bad air. And then they made disease theory, found out that it's actually mosquitoes doing this, and they really found they had to find a way to control it. So they actually went to the state, and they said, we need to form taxing districts for mosquito control. So in 1915, we came up with the Mosquito Abatement Act, which gave us the power to tax, form boards, and have abatement authorities. So we do have the same governance structure as a city or a county, as an independent special district, but all we do is mosquito control. So we're very limited in our scope. It's very simple. We provide mosquito control. We do have the ability, again, to abate properties, but we've actually never enforced it. We really seek out voluntary compliance rather than finding and abating. All right, I'm trying to get the next slide here. It's not moving forward. Oh, wait, let me try now.
There you go.
I'm clicking. Try the keyboard. There we go. I'll do that. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption. Our board is quite large. You may wonder why we have such a large mosquito board. By California law, every city within our district has a board member. So that's appointed by the council. You're currently represented by your vice mayor, Courtney Welch, which I'm nice to see online. So, but every, every city has a board member. Sometimes they're council members, sometimes they're scientists, academics. One of our board members just left us to go to the county supervisor, so that's from Hayward Supervisor Marquez. And some board members are just members of the public that are very engaged with their city, and they make a great board member with us. So we have fourteen, fifteen board members from all walks of life throughout the county. And with that board, again, as I mentioned earlier, we collect about a $5 million budget. We have the smallest tax on the property tax bill, which we're very proud of. We were approved for $5 back in 2007, and we still only collect $2.57 of the benefit assessment and $1.74 of a special tax and some share of ad valorem as well. We're very open with our finances with that $5 million. We seek out GFOA awards for our financial reporting, and all of this is on our website. So everyone knows, if they really want to know, how do you finance mosquito control? It's right there. It's very open and transparent. All right, so now that's the how we do it. Now it's why we do it. It's a biology lesson. Mosquitoes have a complete life cycle like a butterfly, so egg, larva, people adult. And when the male and female mosquitoes mate, the female now needs to seek out blood to create eggs. So anytime you ever get bitten by a mosquito, it's only a female mosquito. So males don't bite, it's only females. So when you are doing mosquito control, we're only controlling female mosquitoes. That's really, really concerned about. You can see the difference here. So that's the male. It emerges, it looks pretty fancy, it attracts females, and then the females hunt like the lioness and other animals to go find blood. And that's what you're seeing. And that's how the disease spreads as well. Anytime a mosquito bites a human or another animal, the last animal it bit, it still has some of that in it. So it then spreads to the next person, the next person, the next person. That's why it's such an effective killer of about a million people a year is through mosquito diseases. And in Emeryville and other places, you'll see a lot of calls we get are just standing water underneath flooded basements, especially now, backyard sources, that sort of source. Anytime you have standing water, mosquitoes need to breathe air when they're in their pupil form. So it's like snorkeling in wavy ocean. You can't do it because your snorkel gets full of water. It needs calm air so they can breathe. Oop, I went back one. But there is a new mosquito, and that's why I, and one of the reasons I asked staff, thank you so much for letting me come, is that there's a new mosquito coming. It's making its way up through California. It's called Adysegipta, Adysalbopictus. It's an ancient mosquito. It came over with the Columbus Exchange like 500 years ago, but it never established itself in California until about eight or nine years ago. And it's only been detected for the first time. Now it's in Tracy, it's in Milpitas, and it's in Martinez. So it's surrounding us, and it hasn't been here yet. And why this scares us a bit is it spreads diseases now we call travel-related, dengue, chikungunya, yellow fever. We're always getting these reports from the county health officer, people coming with those diseases, but you can't get them here. Well, soon, as soon as we have those mosquitoes in this region, we'll start getting those diseases in Alameda County and in Emeryville. So we're a bit concerned with that. Compared to the native mosquitoes, West Nile virus and other encephalitis that unfortunately we have to live with, they're endemic, but it's not these new diseases that we're more concerned about. And these little mosquitoes are different. They are like the cockroach of mosquitoes. They don't like the marshes and the traditional sources. They like to live in buckets and plants and bromeliads and little cryptic tiny sources. So they're very, very difficult to control. Speaking of control, the most way we interact with the public is people call us. They usually want fish. We provide fish the day of, or people just say, hey, there's some water, which we get a lot of calls right now, saying, hey, there's some water in my backyard, in this, in this flooded area. We respond, we look, no mosquitoes, or yes, mosquitoes, and we control them. Sometimes we control them. The best way to do it is let nature do it. So this is us just with our shovels cleaning out ditches. So it has been, been the same way for a hundred years. We still do it, and that just lets the tide or waves just do the work for us, so we don't actually have to do any actual pesticide applications. Or we let fish do the job, as I mentioned before. That's a very common way. We put fish in man-made sources in people's backyards. They are non-native to this area, so we try not to put them out into nature to compete against other fish, but we do put them in backyard swimming pools, a lot of the times ornamental ponds, and they control mosquitoes. We do have to do some mosquito control, and sometimes we try to find the most technology advanced or efficient way to do it, such as drones. So when we do have areas that are hard to reach, well, in the old days, we'd use helicopters or planes. Now we use drones, and it's much more specific and small and unobtrusive to nature if we can. And if we do have diseased mosquitoes flying around, we test them at our lab, and we find West Nile virus or other diseases in these mosquitoes, or birds for that matter, finding dead birds, we will actually fog and kill the adult mosquitoes. We haven't done that for a few years. Last time was in 2018 in Union City. In the last 30 years, we've done it about four or five times. So we really try to avoid using this method, but it is our duty to the public health to control mosquitoes from infecting and getting people sick in this area. As I mentioned, we do have a lab in our office in Hayward. We were many years based in Oakland, but about 30 years ago, we moved to Hayward. It's closer to the marshes where we work. And there we have a QPCR machine, similar to what you test for COVID. We test for West Nile virus and other arboviruses. And this is another way of mosquito control, is me coming here to speak to you all. It's a way to, a lot of the mosquito sources are in people's backyards. They may not be aware of. We will be back in Emeryville on Saturday at the Healthy Families event, I believe, so you'll see us out there. You'll see a booth. Judy Pierce is our community education outreach, so she'll be there. And we'll be at the Berkeley Bay Festival as well. So we always try to make aware that to the communities. We do a lot of equity work to find out where people don't know that we exist, and that you don't have to pay for mosquito controls. It's a very ecologically inefficient way to do it, and that's what we focus on, so working in schools and community events. And a lot of the work is done on public and private land. Again, we always look for, we always achieve voluntary compliance. So working with landowners, working with property owners and renters to achieve our mission of making a very sustainable mosquito control in the area. And we want to make sure the work we do works. So we have an active research laboratory where we have published in peer-reviewed journals, partnering with universities and colleges in the area, internships to prove that the methods we work or other methods work and have it publication in journals to say so. And as I mentioned before, one methodology we were looking at the last few years is the equity issue, is that people may not know that we exist, and we find this, that people don't always know, and they will hire a private pest control company and not knowing that they actually have a government-sponsored, paid mosquito control agency. So we've been doing very targeted work in areas where we're not getting the calls from. Why aren't they calling us? And we're doing focused events in the community, in the schools, and social media to focusing on these areas where are traditionally underserved in mosquito control. All right, I'm almost done. Thanks for everyone for your patience. So I got about three slides left, and this is where I'm talking about this really difficult mosquito to control. We don't have here yet, but it's going, it's coming here, and there's some very novel ways to control it. And I'll go into a little bit of science fiction here. It's actually real science, but it sounds like science fiction. How to control this very difficult deadly mosquito, and you can't use traditional means like pesticides. So what the three methods are, you irradiate it with X-rays, you infect it with bacteria or genetically modify it. So to irradiate this, and this has actually been done, working right now in the Fort Myers Southwest Florida area, and also in Orange County, Los Angeles, you take a mosquito, millions of mosquitoes, you grow them, and you separate them. You don't grow any females because they're the ones that bite, and you only grow the males. And then you zap them with X-rays and you sterilize them. And then you take these male mosquitoes that you've grown at your, at your office, and you drive through the community and you release them out to the public, these male sterile mosquitoes. So then the native mosquitoes are trying to mate with these native, these non-native irradiated males, and the population slowly goes down because they're mating with sterile males. So that's the theory, and that's how it works. They've used it for this many years for medflies, other agricultural pests, some cattle flies as well. So it is an effective technology. It's just very labor-intensive and very expensive. Another technology that is being looked at, this was launched with Verily, which is a subset of Alphabet slash Google, and this was done in the Central Valley in Visalia, I'm sorry, in Fresno, where they would infect a mosquito with a bacteria. And then the offspring of this bacteria would be sterile as well. So again, it's a sterile male mosquito again, and that, this van would drive around and release all these male mosquitoes. The residents were concerned, saying, why would a mosquito control district be releasing mosquitoes? But they're males, they don't bite, and again, the processes, they would slowly, the population would slowly decline. And the last one is a genetically modified mosquito. This one, it took years. It finally had a project in the Florida Keys to, they had a very large dengue outbreak in that area. So this is one of the techniques they use to control it. And they're trying to do this now again, and this is the one in Visalia. But again, this, there is some concern from the public on this technique when you hear genetically modified mosquitoes, but it's the same concept. You release male mosquitoes, and the mates of the native female mosquitoes produces sterile offspring, and eventually the population declines. So this is, all these methods are years off for the area, but I really just want to reach out to you, council and staff. If you ever hear concerns about these things come into your public about mosquito control, I know I've spoken in front of Berkeley City Council and other jurisdictions as well, that you can reach out to us because we are looking at these. We have no real favorite on this opportunity, on these different options, but again, it's several years down the road, but we want to make sure that we have the best approach, and we want to make sure that you all as council are informed as well, that you have mosquito control looking at these. So that's my presentation. Thank you much for your time. Mosquitoes.org, you can always get ahold of us, and we are your local mosquito control district. So thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there questions for Ryan from council members? Let me pull my, councilmember Mora?
Yes, thank you for this presentation on, I think, what is a very important, sometimes underappreciated aspect of living in the Bay Area. Regarding the new species of mosquitoes, I'm actually calling from Southern California. Now I am familiar with these new species. I've grown up with mosquitoes, and these are much nastier, and the daytime activity is very unpleasant. So I expect these are going to become ubiquitous soon. I also expect that the studies around the genetically sterilized males, which are proving efficacious, whatever the means, the bacterium, the irradiation, the science is bearing this out, and it looks like there's promise there. How do you need, will you need to, have you guys priced out what it would cost to run this type of work in, in our area? And do you need to raise fees to that, the allowed amount? Or what's your thinking around economic feasibility funding that?
Yeah, good question. Yeah, these, I didn't go into too much detail, but you're right, they are daytime biting mosquitoes. So in Florida, they've been dealing with these mosquitoes for decades, and they have, they're called Florida rooms because you can't be outside during the day. And people in Southern California are starting to build these Florida rooms because you cannot have a backyard party when you're getting eaten alive by mosquitoes constantly. So it is going to be a change of life, but a change of attitudes with that. But yeah, as far as the costs going, we have, we have very, our board has been very wise over the years, and we have invested some of our excess funds into reserve accounts. So we would not, I believe, have to raise our dues for this. What I'm instead working on is efficiencies and working with mutual aid agreements with different areas. So I don't think Alameda County would go alone with this. We'd probably work with Contra Costa, we'd probably work with Santa Clara, and build kind of a mutual aid response to something like this. So I know in LA and Orange County, very large counties themselves, I think it runs about a million or two a year for this X-ray process because you have to buy the equipment, you have to rent out a space, and you have to hire a bunch of biologists to raise all these. So it is an ongoing expense, but hopefully we can do it under a certain, my wish would be under our $4, we can still manage it. But that is the genetically modified mosquitoes, that is a private sector solution. So they could honestly just bypass our district and just sell directly to consumers, these little boxes. That I think is their eventual goal, so that any resident can just buy this little box and control mosquitoes on their properties. So they're working with us now to study the effects of this, but I think all these are a private sector solution to monetize this method and sell it to the general public. And we would work in some kind of private partner, private public partnership in the future. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who have questions? I have a few questions for you, Ryan. So I have three questions. My first question is, the fish that you put in these areas that you noted, sometimes, you know, you try to let nature do its course with tidal waters and other things. So I'm an outdoorsman, and I encounter mosquitoes. I hike every summer, you know, three, 400 miles, and I go to places full of mosquitoes. So I'm curious, what type of fish do you use when you're introducing fish inland like that to small spaces? And is the, is the plan that the fish are essentially going to die, they're going to be in a body of water that's going to go away? So they're going to have a limited life of their own? What kind of fish do you use? What kind of fish do you use, and what's the plan with them?
Gambusia affinis is the species, and they're native to the southeast of the United States. So decades ago, before we had a lot of environmental protections we have today, they have been released. So if you go to any creek or any body of water in this area, you'll find this mosquito fish. Now that we know that there is invasive mosquitoes, invasive mosquito fish aren't the best method because they can outcompete, but they are very effective mosquito control fish. So they're just little guppies, about that big. And there are native species that can, native fish species that can do the same effect. Anyone who, I originally am Midwesterner, and we had a lake, we didn't have mosquitoes because we had fish that ate the mosquito larvae there. But you do find it in more wetland areas where this fish can't get to. So that's a lot of the times we see when there's like a cattail marsh or a La Graci area, the fish can't get to the mosquitoes, and that's where you get the mosquito production. So when you're usually hiking in the Tahoe region around July or so, you'll get a lot of mosquitoes, and that's a snowmelt. The snow will melt, the mosquitoes will breed in the marsh, in the new areas where there's no natural predators, because we would rather a natural process work out where you have dam, damsel flies, dragonflies, or something else, bats take care of it for us, but if they can't, that's where we come in.
Okay, so my next question is similar to the first one, but other than being food for fish, is there an actual beneficial purpose for the existence of mosquitoes?
I think in the general, yes. So when we talk about, I think there's always concern about we're going to get rid of all mosquitoes. Well, we're mosquito control. I think back in the '30s, they used to call it mosquito eradication districts, and they kind of found out really quickly that that's an impossible goal. So they've kind of added abatement. And when we're talking about this '80s gypda, so there's in Alameda County, we have about 22 species. In the state, we have about 52 species. Worldwide, we have about 2,000 mosquito species. So even if we did really try to reduce this new mosquito that was coming here, that's only one of the 20-some species, and the nature that's out there already is not dependent on that new species anyway. So does that make any sense? So there's no bird that is now, oh, I wish I had that mosquito, because it has been, no, it's there yet. So it's not a really a substantial food source. But it can be a food source if there's no alternatives. So we always use bats, for example. They do like mosquitoes, but they prefer other insects more. So if they, it would be like eating individual rice grains or just having a sandwich. So I think any of us, we, if we want to get more protein-based or whatever, we would go for a larger source. And that's kind of how bats will look at a moth versus a mosquito. It's more bang for their buck, if you will. So if you, we eradicated all mosquitoes in the world, I don't think that would be the best solution, but we're not even close to doing that, nor should we. So it's more of a controlling the most dangerous ones that we know of to an acceptable level where there's less disease transmission.
My last question is, in terms of repellent that people use, right? So this is a product that I oversubscribe to. There's a lot of differing opinions about the safety of various mosquito repellent products, and maybe people who have lived their whole life in California have never even had to contemplate this. But growing up in the Great Lakes region and going back every summer to hike in the woods, I am very familiar with everything from, you know, DEET to natural repellents to lemongrass, to all these different options you have. And there's, you know, emerging studies about how the overexposure of some of those products to human skin can be cancer-causing, can lead to other kinds of human ailments. Similarly, people argue that the more natural repellents, the more natural repellents don't actually repel, they're not effective, right? So I was just wondering, since you're in the business of controlling mosquitoes, maybe you can provide a professional opinion as to the efficacy, without maybe naming any brands, the efficacy of which type of repellent is best and safest for people to use?
There are, you know, EPA-approved repellents. I always say, if it works for you, then it works as well. I know naturally, I spent some time in the South Pacific, and they would plant different basil plants around, and that, they felt that was a way to repel them. In the upper Midwest, I used to go canoeing in the Boundary Waters area, and we would use deep woods off, and that's the only way you could sleep. But then you'd be concerned, because it would actually melt your rain gear, and you're like, why am I putting this in my body, but it's melting my rain gear? But it was that or not sleep. So there's kind of a level there. I know that lemon eucalyptus is an effective approach, that people do find that. I know anything garlic-based, I've done this presentation to a few cities, and every time someone's like, you know, I'm always the one in the room that's getting bitten. I don't know why that is. And it really, there's a lot of science to it. Their mosquitoes have these different senses, and they're just drawn to different pheromones. When we attract them, we use different odors, body odors, and some of the most effective way to attract a mosquito to a trap is the smell of human sweat. So they are attracted to that smell. So when we put a trap out, you'll walk by, and it smells like a gym, but that's how mosquitoes are attracted to that, because they understand that there's someone respirating, there's some blood to be taken from that individual. So if you can mask that, and whatever masks you, well, we do have some information on website, though, for actual recommendations. But DEET does work, but I think with anything, you do want to have caution whenever you use any chemicals. But I know lemon eucalyptus is a good natural approach as well. Or just have a very heavy garlic dinner before you go out into nature, and hopefully that will emit from your pores and mask your own odors, so.
Well, I can tell you after four days, but definitely after 25 days of hiking in the woods, nothing masks your odors. But I will, I will also say that I've tried Natrapel, which has some of the components that you mentioned, and it has been fairly effective. I think a helpful thing for people to know also is that mosquitoes become lethargic at 60 degrees Fahrenheit, and they become immobile at 50 degrees Fahrenheit. So one of the reasons we don't see them here is combination of wind and temperature and other things. People are always like, it seems like the Bay Area should have them, but actually, the temperature is not actually right for mosquitoes to thrive. So it's one of the built-in benefits, and one of the reasons people should support climate change action, because if you don't want mosquitoes, don't let the temperature keep going up.
Exactly, yeah.
Any other comments or questions for our presentation? No? Thank you so much for being here, Ryan.
Thank you for having me.
Of course. All right, we'll move to agenda item 13, which is department head reports. Department head reports to make this evening?
I believe Mr. Brian.
Hi, I'm here, Mr. Mayor.
There he is. Hi, Charlie.
Hi there. Mayor Bowders and members of the city council, I am speaking to you tonight from beautiful Philadelphia, where I am attending the American Planning Association National Planning Conference, and I'm here to give you my report on the recent activities of the Planning Commission. Their last meeting was about a week and a half ago on March 23rd, and there were two items on that agenda, as are listed here on your agenda. I will note that we still have a vacancy on the commission, and Commissioner Henry was absent from the meeting, so we had a quorum of five commissioners present. Both of the items were public hearings. The first one was a one-year conditional use permit for a temporary women's emergency shelter at 4300 San Pablo Avenue. The commission approved that unanimously. The second item was two blade signs for what is now being called the General Cable Building, used to be known as the Hollis Building at 6221 Hollis Street, and the commission also approved that application unanimously. Both of these decisions are appealable to the city council within 15 days. The appeal deadline is this coming Friday, April 7th. And of course, if the council wishes to appeal either of these items to yourselves, this would be your opportunity to do so. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brian. Are there any council members who wish to appeal items 13.1A or 13.1B and have it appear before the city council as an appealed item? I see no hands raised. There will be no appeals of those items by the city council. That concludes department head reports, unless Mr. City Manager, you have anything else?
Okay.
Okay. That moves us to agenda item 14, future agenda item requests from council members. Are there council members who have future agenda item requests?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pryforce?
So I'd like to, well, first, I thank you, Janelle, for speaking and sharing your ADA experience. I'd like to re-invite the, a discussion and a future agenda item for, for us to consider what we can do to support adding ADA doors, access to residences like Watergate that are private condominiums and also rental properties.
Okay. My understanding is that that's existing law. Is that correct? That we already are, buildings are already required to put ADA doors in, compliance with ADA?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So what was the, what's the specific request?
It would be for, since we don't have, did we hire a code enforcement officer?
I think we have a recruitment going right now.
We have hired a code enforcement officer. They've accepted the officer, and we'll be start, offer, and we'll be starting at the end of the month, end of April.
Okay. So I'll, I'll wait until, to place it on the agenda item after we get a report from the code enforcement officer. Yeah, so, yeah, so I can wait.
Okay.
I would just add that there is a Emeryville form, a request for service form, that members of the public can fill out if there are issues relating to building code or ADA issues, and that can be provided and submitted to the city.
Yep. So Ms. Janelle, if you'd like to, hi, if you'd like to just chat with the city attorney and the city manager at the front desk up here after the meeting, they can get you the link to that, that space. If you have a complaint, the city can, the city code inspector, which is currently being done by the building official and some other staff, they can do a review of compliance with ADA law. Yep, you're welcome. Okay. I have two requests for future agenda items. The first is, we heard this evening that there are four vacancies on the Commission on Aging, and that's prohibiting the Commission on Aging from currently having meetings regularly. I'd like to ask if we could bring back a item at the next meeting that would allow us to change the requirement for the Commission on Aging's body to be, instead of saying it's nine people, it could be seven or nine people, which would then allow them, until the state deals with this law that allows remote meetings to take place, we would allow the commission to have capacity to have a quorum to conduct its business. Are there a majority of members who support us allowing that to happen as a temporary solution to helping the Commission on Aging?
Yes, I support it.
Okay, I see Courtney is nodding yes. David, do you support that?
I do. I also, I wanted to ask about the, sorry, the ADA issue again. Is that, is that a future agenda item?
It was requested, but we're, he's withholding it because we're going to wait till the code inspector starts, and the code inspector can provide analysis or feedback or a report.
Got it. Okay. Sorry.
That's fine. Do you support the other item?
Yes.
Do you support the item? Yes, I do. Okay, so staff, please bring that item back. The second item I wanted to request is, we, in 2018, we undertook the process to build the vision of the city's community art center. I was mayor that year. We had a whole process with a blue ribbon panel of artists and community members. We had a really long and robust design process. The Planning Commission, the Public Art Committee, you know, helped us get down to three final applications. There was a staff review panel, and we selected a developer. COVID happened shortly thereafter, and the developer was unable to complete the plans that were envisioned and supported by the Public Art Committee, the Planning Commission, the city council, and the community at large. And in the very fall of this last year, that legal arrangement ended. Members of the art committee in the community are rightfully wanting to know what we're going to do next, and we've needed to take some time to complete those legal steps. But what I'd like to ask is that after we complete some of the next immediate things that are on our list, which include the city's budget and some other big-ticket items, I'd like to ask if we could have a study session in July to bring this item back and have the staff present to council options for the next steps, so that we can continue the work on that. Is there support for that?
Can I add something to it?
Sure.
I like that idea. First of all, it's great, and I support it, absolutely. Can, there was something about the city's priorities, library being one of the priorities. Can we get a study session of having a library and art center in the same venue, or?
We can, we can ask for the staff to bring something back that would include options for us to include a library with the art center. I don't have any problem with that. Is that what you're asking for?
Absolutely, because I think that would, that would take care of two things in, in one study session, and maybe save the city some money in getting those two together.
I'm fine with that. Do you support that?
Resolutely, yes.
Okay. And council members, well, Mora and Vice Mayor Welch, do you support that? I see Courtney is nodding yes. David?
Yes, I'm just wondering, is it going to, are we kind of, is this for like a combined effort, or is this for like two separate, two separate topics?
We're leaving that open. We're being broad, so it's just going to be a study session, which is in July. There's no action going to be taken. It's going to just be to have the staff come back and present options for us on how we could move forward with the art center. And I've accepted the request from Councilmember Cor to include in that how a library could be included, what the challenges might be with that, or what the opportunities are, the synergies for that.
Sure, that's a good idea. Thanks for clarifying.
No problem. So that's got unanimous support, and that will come back in July or thereafter, okay? Okay, are there any other future agenda items? Councilmember Pryforce?
I'd like to place on the future agenda item, given the historic precedence today of a former president being indicted and arraigned, that the, that the forces of fascism is something that we're constantly dealing with as a country, as a state, and as a city. And so I'd like to re-invite the Pledge of Allegiance to be returned to the city council chambers as a part of our procedures. And yeah, and I'd like to start now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would probably be providing the Pledge of Allegiance at every council meeting until we do. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Well, that brings us to the end of the agenda, which is item 15. And for adjournment today, I'd like to adjourn in memory of David C. Martinez. He was known as Danny to his family and friends. He was born in 1943 in the Philippines. He was an attorney and organizer, and he was an anti-Marcos, Marcos, anti-fascist activist. He was put on Marcos's list. He escaped the Philippines under an assumed identity in 1972, and he reunited with his wife, Rosalind, in 1974 in the country of Japan, along with, along with their brother, his children, his first two children. They ultimately moved to California, and a couple years later, in 1976, they had a daughter by the name of Diane. He never stopped advocating for people who were seeking asylum. He helped hundreds, if not thousands, of people with their immigration status, and he turned to his work on anti-colonial academic writing in his later years in life. He was the husband of Rosalind, the father of three children, including Diane Martinez, a former council member of this city and its former mayor, grandfather of six, and a friend to many other people. And with that, Madam Clerk, the time is 8:38, and in the memory of David C. Martinez, this meeting is adjourned.